Okay, let's call this meeting to order. Warminster Board of Supervisors for Thursday, May 5th. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment for thoughts. Go out to all the people in Ukraine who are fighting for their democracy. All right, announcements. We had an executive session tonight. In that session, we discussed personnel issues, litigation, and real estate. Did I miss anything, Scott? Okay, thank you. I have one announcement. See here. The Cystic Fibrosis Foundation is holding a Great Strides Walk fundraiser at the Warminster Community Park on Saturday, May 14th. So I know one of our engineering team, they support that, they will be there. They have a four-month, one of their family, a four-month-old daughter who's diagnosed with cystic fibrosis. So we ask everyone to go out and help and support that. I don't know if it's an announcement, I didn't see it anywhere, so I just wanted to bring that up and we'll put that out on the webpage as well. Other than that, I'll pass it on to you, Kathy.
Okay, Mr. Chair. I have a couple announcements. The first, which being Janice, Charlton, Judy Hoover, myself, and Mr. Hayes, we attended the Pennsylvania Association of Township Supervisors in Hershey. And we all took classes and we had, we shared information with other supervisors and other township managers, so it was very productive. We all took different ones, we shared all the things that we learned. So it was, all I can help the township down the road, more information that you learn about. So I just wanted to say it was a wonderful time. The other thing I wanted to bring up was, last night Renee Steckline had told me something really interesting, and so far Renee, nobody's heard this yet. So she told me that because of the high grass in the park, that the ticks are really bad. Karen had mentioned to us that the ticks, the deer ticks are real, the small ones, and there's tons of them. So you want to stay out of the high grasses, whether you be, especially in park areas. But there are special socks you can get, and they're called tick socks. And you can go on Amazon, or like the Mountain Store where they sell all those kinds of things. And according to Renee, if they go on your sock, it burns them, but it doesn't burn you. So that's just a general information out there. And make sure you, if you go in the parks, you're taking walks, make sure you dress appropriately with the pants and the shirts, because there are a lot of ticks right now. So just a public service announcement. Thank you, that's it.
Okay, Bork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to start with the, unfortunately, a somber one. I want to send my condolences, and I'm sure the board and administration's condolences along to the Witt family. A few weeks ago, we lost Andy Witt, who was a 25-year employee over at Public Works. And he fought a courageous battle for the past two or three years, and unfortunately, he lost. But I want to send my condolences along to his family, his wife, and his kids. After that, Mr. Chairman, I just have a few Park and Rec announcements.
Sure.
The Park and Recreation is busy planning the 2022 community events, such as the VFW Memorial Celebration and Warminster Day. Anyone interested in sponsorships should contact the Park and Rec office. Rubber Ducky Regatta tickets are still on sale. And the event is May the 15th, 2022. Check the Township website. Join us that day at Kemper Park for the Duckie Picnic. The event is sponsored by Victory Bank this year, we appreciate their sponsorship. Par Recycle Works recycled 22,457 pounds of electronic equipment in the park on April 16th. That's, that's pretty good, really good. Invasive Species Removal, thank you to everyone that came out for the invasive species removal on Saturday, April 30th. Members of the Park Board, Rotary Club, EAC, Loud College Middle School Nature Club, and all participated. And I was also told that Mike Ferris had long pants on at that event. If you could get a picture of that up on the park board, up on the Park and Rec website, I'd really like to see that. No, I've known him, I've never seen him in long pants, so that's, that's what I've been told, so. Thanks, Mike, we appreciate it. And I just want to review some upcoming events. The 7th of May is the Armid Yoga, starts in the park every Saturday through August, the 7th of May. Also, Warminster Food Bank 5K is this Saturday. I know they're calling for lousy weather, but it's rain or shine. Anyone that can come out and support them, it's their first, their first 5K that the food bank's trying to run for a fundraiser. It's a shame that doesn't, the weather doesn't look promising, but anyone that can support the food bank, they, they've done tremendous work, especially through COVID. I mean, they've really touched a lot of people, and they really need to keep fundraising and keep that food bank going. The 15th of May is the Healing Conscious Foundation at the Pavilion. The 15th is the Rubber Ducky Regatta. I touched, Ken had already touched on the Cystic Fibrosis Foundation, that's on the 14th. The 22nd, Ben Wilson Center, Rotsenbarks, on the runway. And the 30th of May is also the Memorial Day Parade. We have a really beautiful ceremony here at 10:00 a.m. It's, it's really, it's more important than the parade, actually, in honors of people that sacrificed, the ultimate sacrifice for our country. So anyone that we could ask to come out for that, and then the parade afterwards, which ends up over at the VFW, and there's a really nice open house at the VFW with hot dogs and pretzels for the kids. So then, in June, we have Greater Bucksmont Chamber of Commerce Golf Outing at Five Ponds. The 4th of June, we have the Athena 5K Pavilion. The 11th is Warminster Day, which is another one we'll, do we meet before then? We meet before?
June 14th, is it?
Yeah, the 11th, we meet before.
The 11th, yeah, we do.
Okay, so I'll review these June events again, too, but Warminster, Warminster Day, we're still looking for sponsors. The 18th is Operation Ward 57, which is another terrific 5K out in the park that Heather Solinsky, one of our residents, has been running that for several years now. The 19th is Father's Day Fishing Derby, Peace Valley Park. 26th is Ben Wilson Senior Center Food Truck and Car Show Event. Last year was their first one, and, and it was far greater than their expectations. I mean, the, the park was busting at the seams with people, it was a real nice car show, and lots of good food trucks, and that was for the Ben Wilson Center. So hopefully this year it'll grow on that, and it'll get bigger and bigger. And the, and the biggest one is that we need volunteers. Warminster Day is June the 11th, anyone that can volunteer for a couple hours, we'd be grateful. But we had some Boy Scouts out to the Park Board meeting last night that we recruited as volunteers, so. Anyone that needs some community service for the organization they belong to, be glad to have you come volunteer for Warminster Day. You can contact Park and Rec, or you can do it online, too, correct?
WarminsterDAYS.org.
WarminsterDAYS.org. If you're welcome, if you'd like to volunteer a couple of hours, it'd be greatly appreciated. And that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman, sorry for the length.
It's okay, Bork. Judy?
Well, I wanted to say, I went to, I went to the Ben Wilson Health Fair on April 21st, it was really interesting, there were lots of vendors there to give you information about Medicare, Medicare special programs. Actually, it was a little depressing, I have to say. Every table was about doing your will, or planning your, the end of your life. But it was all information, healthcare, it was all information that people needed, and at the end, they had a real nice table of all the stuff that the Ben Wilson Center does, the activities, the trips, the plays, and even cruises that you can go on. So Ben Wilson is open Mondays to Thursdays, 9:00, 2:00, 3:00, and so please try to participate if you can, it's a really good program. I wanted to tell you about the library program, which is, we have a lot of ongoing adult programs. And June 2nd, in the Nonfiction Book Club, which is the first Thursday of each month at 1:00, is June 2nd, The Boys in the Boat. Nine Americans and Their Epic Quest for Gold at the 1936 Berlin Olympics. And July 7th is The Codebreaker, Jennifer Doudna, Gene Editing, and the Future of the Human Race by Walter Isaacson. Don't they sound interesting?
That's your thing.
And then a Book to Movie Club, Book to Movie Book Club, June 16th, The Reader by Bernard Schlink. And then Financial Literacy Series, various Tuesdays in June and August at 4:00 p.m. And every other month, staff from Edward Jones provide guided discussions about specific financial topics. And there's also a drawing series, and you can do that May 9th, a couple days from now. Famous Frog is the picture. And June 13th, Lighthouse, Anita Thompson guides you through virtual drawing, this is a virtual thing, virtuals drawing classes. And that's about all I have to tell you about the library. The new director is working out very well, he's very smart, and we really like him. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Judy, and Janice.
Excuse me, I'd like to give a shout out to the Tri-County Athletics Cheerleading Program, they won the national title at Hershey last week.
Little proud of them for the good job.
Those of you that might be interested in doing cheerleading or football, Warminster Pioneers has started their signups for this coming fall. That's warminsterpioneers.org if you're interested. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Janice. There's no presentations, there's no land use matters, so we'll open it up. I'm sorry? It's not in presentations.
Sorry, sorry.
All right, public comment, first round. Bobby Law, this, come on up, Bobby.
Come on down.
I think you have good news for us, don't you?
I do. I always love her smile.
I do, we had a very, very good discount period.
Excellent.
In the month of March, we had 1,646 people pay. The month of April, we had 7,955 pay. A total of 9,601 people have paid. Yesterday and today, we had 29 more people pay.
Wonderful.
So we're down to 732 people left to pay.
That's great, great news.
Yeah, it was really good. For the month of April, I gave you $6,109,996.37. So for a total for the two months is $8,209,534.24. That's not including the trash. The trash, in April, I gave you, me, $2,821,830. So a total of $3,676,035. So collections are going really, really well.
Great.
And the only other thing I'd like to tell you is, the tax collectors are now having all their meetings at Five Ponds Golf Course, and we are thrilled with it. The food is delicious, the service is outstanding, and the price is great. So we will be having all our meetings there, and I just wanted to give a shout out to them, that, what a good job they do over there.
Great, thanks, Bobby. And thanks to all the residents for, for stepping up and.
They love to see her.
Yes.
The lines, that last week, we were averaging between 250, 300 people a day, not including the mail, the mail. So it was really, it was really crowded, and people were very nice, they, they stood six feet apart, you know, which was nice. But yeah, our residents really pay their taxes.
That's great, great news.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I did attend the Rotary Club golf outing last.
Friday.
Was that Friday, right, right. It was a wonderful time, yeah, they do a great job over there, the course is in beautiful shape.
I'm very pleased with them, they really are, they do, they do a phenomenal job for us.
They do.
And you figure that there's 54 tax collectors, well, not everybody comes, but, and everybody, nobody has a bad word to say, the food is hot, it's, service is good, price is great.
Yeah.
So we can get the word out to people.
Yeah, it's a wonderful place, and the food was fantastic, too. I mean, it's always something different, every time I go there, and food's always good.
Yeah, they always give us something different.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Bobby.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Hello, Darlene.
Hi, Darlene Baker, 1537 Mulberry Circle. I have three things, but I promise I'll try to be as quick as possible. First thing is Warminster Day, I heard it said multiple times, June 11th, we need sponsors, vendors, and volunteers. And I came before you a couple months ago, and I'm here to do my nagging, I mean, gentle reminder, to have you guys sign up as volunteers. And that can be done at warminsterdays.org. The second one is, I'd like to read into public record the letter that I wrote to you regarding Karen Whitney's retirement, so I'd like to read that into public record. Very sad to hear that Karen Whitney is retiring, happy for Karen, but very sad for Warminster Township. She's done a tremendous job as the Director of Parks and Recreation, managing all the parks, expanding the parks, running camps over the years, and planning and running so many activities. She worked tirelessly on behalf of Warminster Township. She's very organized, has lots of tremendous contacts and relationships with businesses, other townships, and knows how to work with the various government organizations and agencies, and just knows how to get things done. I know she worked many, many hours over her 40 years with all the special events, I'm sure she's going to be tough to replace. You know, there's a couple projects that I think, she's, hundreds of projects she's been involved in, but the two that I'd like to, like, just do a quick mention are the Warminster Community Park. I mean, it's probably the jewel of Warminster, and between Karen and Kathy and Larry, I think there was a labor of love, and their patience and persistence, and really doing the ongoing prodding, the gentle prodding to get it accomplished, I think that's really a great accomplishment to Karen. So thank you very much, Karen, you and Kathy did a phenomenal job on Warminster Community Park. And like I said, there's hundreds of other type projects and stuff, but one of the things that I think we should look at is something like Safety Town. When you talk to the other parks who built something like that, they are just amazed that we did it for the amount of money that we did. I mean, that's because Karen was able to get really good prices on the materials, and all the labor was donated, was volunteer work. And that was, you know, with the, you know, she partnered with the Rotary Club to get that done, and the, like, some of the local contractor unions, and then unskilled people like me, you know, like, but we had the skilled people, and all that labor was donated. And when you tell people what the other township parks and stuff, what we accomplished with the amount of money that was accomplished, that's all due to Karen. So, you know, I just, you know, want to make sure that we recognize her.
I saw Leo and Claudia the other night, and we were talking about when we went out to that dingy place in Narstown to get the material, and I don't think that was OSHA approved, Claudia was cutting the, some of the sample planks with flip flops on. But yeah, that was, that was a remarkable project, that's one, that was great, a terrific project.
Yes.
One of many, one of many.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of projects.
We appreciate everything she's done for us, and we're actually happy in her retirement, we understand that it was a work of love and passion, and, you know, 40 years serving the communities, you know. I look, I, I'm happy that she's actually retiring, because after 40 years, I don't think I'd want to be doing anything here either, for 40 years, or, or at any job. So good for her, we're very pleased, we're very happy for her and, and her retirement, we wish the best.
Yeah, and I, I think one of the things that we need to recognize is, Karen does it because she loves Warminster. And all those projects she did without fanfare, she didn't want pats on the back, but I do think we need to give her a pat on the back. So one of my suggestions is, maybe we have a Karen Whitney Day in Warminster, so, something I think you should consider.
We will, we'll take that under consideration. We will be having a luncheon for Karen.
Okay.
In, in honor of all her years of service.
Well, you know, I said it last night at the Park Board meeting, someday I'd like to see her name on something, and Kathy's out there at that park someday, you know, I would like to.
I think that's a good idea, great idea. The Bark Park. Okay. And the third one is, I think we talked about this last night at the Park and Rec Board meeting, that they're thinking about moving the Park and Rec Office back into the Township Building, and to me, I can't think of a good reason to do that, I really do think you want the presence in the park. Like I said before, it's the crown jewel of Warminster. So I really do think, you know, you want people coming into the park, even for some of that other stuff, to get their dog licenses, you know, to come in, to buy their, you know, if they want to buy tickets and stuff. But there's been some vandalism, and I know the vandalism's at night typically, but having that presence, knowing somebody's there at the park, I really do think, you know, something you ought to consider. I would actually think, maybe you want to go the other direction, Mr. Scott, like, maybe have a weekly, not a weekly, one of your monthly staff meetings in the park, in the office there, and after the staff meeting, get out and talk to some of the residents in Warminster. I'm sure they'd love to give you some, their ideas about not only the parks, but the rest of the things that are going in at Warminster. So I really strongly suggest you think about that. I'll leave you with one thing that we used to talk about. In one of the companies that I used to work in, we used to tease that the executive office was Fantasyland. And I think getting out of Fantasyland and really, you know, talking to the people in Warminster, and the people that are using the park, I think that might be a good idea, and just, you know, having one staff meeting over there a month and just talking to the people might be worth it. So, but, you know, just a recommendation, and some thought behind it. Thank you.
That's a good suggestion.
Thanks, Darlene.
I spent time at the park with my grandkids, and there's always folks over there, they love our playgrounds, they, people always say, people come from other towns to come to, to the playground and all, and they always say positive things about it. And then, of course, some people will ask questions about the Township Board or have you, but it's always nice to have a presence in the community, so, thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Good evening, my name's Renee Steckline, I live at 271 Essex Road. Very quickly, I would just like to request that the board reconsider to allow the staff to remain at the rec building. Having a person in the building protects our kids, our family, our buildings, and it also protects the park. Now, I heard that we're going to be putting in cameras, and I think that's a great idea, they are a great tool. But I think Chief Donnelly would tell you, there's nothing better than having boots on the ground, people in the community. And that is more impactful. And just to use those cameras as a tool, but keeping some sort of staff presence at the, at the rec, I think would definitely be more impactful. Additionally, it's also a better use of time with getting ready for programs. Programs take a lot of time, and to be running back and forth from the Township Building to the, to the rec building is seriously just a waste of time, when you could be using that time more effectively there at the rec building. So I'd like you to reconsider that, and that's really all I got to say, so thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Hey, Chief, how would you like that to be a satellite office for the Police Department?
Triple it. Or we probably wouldn't keep it as nice as Karen does.
Probably not, but it might be a nice presence.
Put 40 guys in a building like that.
No, 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 we're talking about a satellite office, maybe, you know, a couple people there.
We've had it before.
Yep, yep. Maybe that'll stop the vandalism. Hey, Mike?
Hi, Mike Ferris, 948 Cornell Drive. I'm glad Darlene talked about all of Karen's accomplishments, so I don't have, I can keep mine really short. I've been with the, been working with the parks, parks and rec for, I guess this is my fourth year, and when I, when I joined up over there to be on the board several years ago, Karen welcomed me, she had a big smile, a lot of energy, a lot of know-how. She's hard to say no to, she even gets me in the water at the Rubber Ducky Regatta every year, which.
She already has shorts on.
And always has her shorts on.
That's right.
And I, I just want to say that she'll be very hard to replace, and she'll be really missed, especially by the folks on the Parks Board, and anybody else that knows her. And, and, I mean, Darlene listed a lot of the things that Karen's done over the years, with Kathy's health, too, and just can't say enough about them. And once again, we'll miss Karen. And the other thing is, I also want to express my opposition to moving the Parks and Rec Office over to the Township Building. I just, I think it's bad for, like, from a customer service perspective, I mean, if you're in the park, you know, you can ask questions, you can get your discount tickets, you can file your complaints, all that, right there in one spot, so, I just, and as, as the Parks Board last night voted unanimously to recommend not doing that, I, I think I speak for the entire board when I say that, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, Mike, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Listen, just so, just for the record here, we, we wish Karen well, and, you know, when she put in her retirement, we understand that, everybody's going to miss her. 40 years of service, Karen, thank you very much. And, you know, and she's, she's started and built a foundation here, and actually, maybe the first or second floor, but we're going to expand on that. And we're going to make that, the parks even better than they are now, that's the goal. And Karen started it, and we'll get somebody, we're, we're looking for people right now that, that are going to take that mantle and, and carry it very proudly. And we thank Karen for all these years of services, there's no doubt about that. We'll take that comment about moving the Parks and Rec out of there under consideration, but I don't know what we're going to do when we have a one municipal building, because everyone needs to be in the same building, so there's communication between all the departments, and that's the biggest key right now. That's what's lacking right now, is, is a lot of, a lot of communication between the departments, and we, and that's the managerial decision, that's not the board's decision, that's the administrator's decision. And, and, you know, we support Tom and everything he's doing, because he's doing a fine job. Now, as far as the vandalism, that's a problem, and we know about that, and, you know, we're going to put cameras in there, but, you know, we'll, we'll look at other alternatives besides that, you know. If, if it does become a satellite office, if the chief does acquiesce, or just, you know, say it's okay, we'll have a presence in there, maybe 24/7. Maybe that will stop some of the vandalism that's happening in the town, in the park. But we're going to look at all the options, and, and again, our intent is to make the parks even better, and build on what Karen's already started here. So again, we thank her for her service, and Kathy as well, and, you know, and the, and the committee, Parks and Rec Committee does a good job, and we'll take everything under consideration. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Consent agenda. So, consider approval of the Board of Supervisors minutes dated April 7th, 2022. Consider 273 West County Line Road, Patagon Storage, Release Number Two, final from the escrow account in the amount of $51,365.35. Consider authorization to approve agreement with Comcast. Consider approval to authorize agreement with Hayday Athletic. Consider approval of memorial tree and bench policy, which Tom, if you want to go over that, once we get a motion. Consider approval of proclamations recognizing Chamber of Commerce Scholarship recipients, Jamie Henigan, Louis Danielle, and Isabel Haskin. Did I pronounce everyone's name correctly, I hope?
I think we got a few here.
Yes, they are here. It's wonderful to see everyone. So is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just, I need to recuse myself from item A, because I wasn't present for the April 7th meeting.
Okay.
So I'll be voting on consent agenda absent item A.
Okay. Tom, do you want to briefly go over the memorial tree and bench policy?
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Parks Department's been working on a memorial bench and tree policy for a while, and what this means is that if a person wants to donate either a tree or funds for a bench to memorialize a loved one, this policy will cover the ins and outs of that, on, as far as the, you know, the long-term maintenance, the short-term maintenance, the memorial itself, and the type of plants, excuse me, trees. So my understanding is it's been going off for a while, and we wanted to formalize something with the board's approval, so that people can, we do have a few waiting for this, so we can now move forward with the 2022 crop, and make this an ongoing policy for at least the foreseeable future. And for those who don't know, this is a thing that goes on in the parks, and, so if you, if you want to memorialize someone you lost, and they were, Warminster was near and dear to them, or to you, you can do that through this, through the Parks Department and through my office, to have a memorial tree or, or a bench. Now, the applicant, the person wanting to do it, has to bear the costs, and there's some minimal maintenance that.
some minimal maintenance that the Township will do, but if there is a problem with, in long-term problem, has to be worked out with the person that donated the, uh, the item. So, that, I mean, in a nutshell, that's what that is.
I ask a question. I was brought up with the Park Board meeting last night, that we have several that have already paid for these, that they shouldn't have any problem moving forward with.
None whatsoever. No, we were just waiting to get this approved, 'cause I didn't wanna do it until we had the board seeing what it was and understanding what it is.
'Cause I know the intent of this is to keep things, um, proper on these memorial benches.
Yes, they're, they're memorial benches, they're not, they're not statements against certain policies of government or any other thing. So, there's language that, um, you know, in memory, yeah, you, you wanna memorialize somebody, so in memory of someone, that's, that's, you know.
Right.
And last night was mentioned, I just wanted to say with the benches, they're beautiful because you can get up to three lines, you can put their name, uh, every, what Karen said, the other members of the Park and Rec Board, that folks usually do the three lines because it, that's what it, it, um, that's what you can get for the price of the bench. And they are beautiful, the things that people say. So, I think it's nice to keep that up, that tradition with the trees and the benches. So, I'm glad we're taking care of us tonight.
Yeah, Lisa, would you like to?
Good evening, board.
Thank you.
I do wanna touch on that, that the three lines was part of the policy that was changed.
Oh, okay.
So, I guess, uh, these-
Thank you.
Sure. I, I would think that, uh, there might be an issue depending on what was approved, um, prior to this policy. So, if the, if the-
I would think if it's, if, if it's not, um, um, something that would be inappropriate-
Offensive.
-offensive to everyone, or some, or a few, I mean, if it's basically just something maybe a saying that they said it's, it's appropriate.
I'm sure it is.
I don't know. I mean, I'm gonna leave that to the administrators.
Yeah, I can give you the exact, uh-
Yeah, I mean-
The ones that we've already got, and we're saying that we provided their all in order we can leave them under the other policy.
Yes, yes.
Right?
I don't see a problem.
The question was brought up at the Park Board last night.
Right.
I don't see a problem in that, as long as, as long as it's appropriate language.
Their language that was already approved will remain the same.
Right.
Okay. And then going forward with new applications.
Right.
Okay. That's what was, it was discussed at the Park Board last night, we just need to get some clarification.
I don't have a problem with that at all. I mean, I don't know if the rest of the board has an issue with it.
I don't have any problem with it. I think it's a great idea.
Things can get out of control sometimes, and, as a matter of fact, in Seattle City, they, there's no more benches.
No.
Um, because- It's just writing.
That's all it is.
There's no writing either.
So, those applicants will be able to move forward after we adopt this policy tonight with their previous applications.
Yes.
Okay.
So, what, what, what it's gonna say now with the policy is, is in memory of, in honor of name and the, the dates of the person's life. I'm thinking about getting one for my mom. She died here at Ann's Choice in October of two thousand and twenty.
May I ask, Tom, so, so, um, are you saying, Lisa, Tom, with the benches, that you can just do two lines, and it just says in honor of and the date, is that the-
In memory of or in honor of, and the name and the dates.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, now, I have a, a question. I guess this would be for Karen. Um, is this just in the rec, or is this in all the parks? 'Cause we have a large park system, so it's everywhere? Okay. And then they're maintained, we don't have any issues in the other parks? Okay, excellent. Any other questions?
Yeah, one more, Mr. Chairman, on, uh, item F. Um, the two recipients of the, um, scholarships are in the room, can we recognize them?
Absolutely.
Come up and say, come up and tell us who you are.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll be seeing you.
Come on up here.
Come on up.
Come on up, tell us who you are. And we'll be, and we'll be seeing you at the luncheon as well.
We'd like to shake your hand, too.
Right, COVID's over.
Several of us will be coming to the luncheon, too.
Yeah.
Jamie, I'll call him.
Jamie?
We'll be there.
Hi, Jamie, nice to meet you, too.
Hi, Jamie, welcome. Thank you. What a pleasure, yeah.
Same here.
Same here.
You guys know who you are.
Yeah, I wanted to come up and say we'll see you.
Why don't you, uh, guys go over to the podium.
Tell us what school you go to, where you go to college, as I said.
A little about yourself.
Um, hi, my name is Louis Daniele. I am a senior at Archbishop Wood High School, and I am studying finance next year at Penn State.
All right. Yes, we are.
If you need someone to talk to, John Ramey, right here's the guy. Yeah, there you go.
That's right.
Hi, my name is Jamie Henigan. I'm a senior at CB South High School. I also go to MBIT, and I'm going to East Charlesburg to study exercise science next year.
Nice.
We could use you here.
Congratulations.
Check the neck.
Yeah. Wonderful to have you here, and congratulations, and best of luck. So, we'll have the proclamations for you at the luncheon.
Yep.
Yes. Congratulations to your parents, too.
Yeah. Nice job. Very well done.
And your siblings.
Mm-hmm. Okay, that's all I have.
Is that all you have? Uh, any questions or comments from the public?
Motion to, uh-
We have a motion.
Approve. Do?
Yes.
Who motioned it?
She did, and you seconded.
I seconded.
You seconded. Okay, so being no other questions or comments, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Thank you.
What?
Oh, uh, yeah, five oh, yeah, and, and four one.
The extension of item A, four oh.
Four, four oh, right. Four oh dash one for extension, correct?
Correct.
I stand corrected, thank you. Thank you. All right. Finance report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd, I'd like to make a motion, I'll be asking for a second, to approve the bill list dated April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, in the amount of one million, five hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars and six cents, and a supplemental bill list dated April twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, in the amount of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and seventy-five cents, to a grand total of two million, eighteen thousand dollars, five hundred and three, eighteen thousand, five hundred and three dollars and eighty-one cents.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Being none, call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion, that motion carries five oh.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
All right. Do you have good news for us, John?
Uh-oh.
He looks faint, he looks like he's in pain.
Oh, he looks like he's in pain.
Ah.
Looks like he's tan, looks like he's been golfing.
Uh-oh, yeah, yeah.
I spent too much time in the car yesterday. Um, so, in your packets, I actually gave you the summary that I read off of, so you could follow the numbers. It's probably the most basic summary I could make up. Um, looking at the revenues compared to last year, uh, revenues are up four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, you can see where I'm getting the numbers from. I actually put, the revenues are on page six of the total financial statements. I'll give you guys a second. It should just look like this top part.
Which ones? Can you just tell us?
There you go, page six.
Don't wait for us, Johnny, keep going.
Yeah, keep going.
Yeah, keep going.
Everyone should have read this, quite honestly.
So, the one thing I usually do is I back out any one-time revenues that would happen in either year. So, I did back out the tan that was taken last year, which is a tax anticipation note. Um, at the end of twenty twenty-one, we actually had enough in reserves that we didn't have to borrow money to get us through that time period till taxes started coming in. So, that's a good thing. So, it saved the money on interest there. Uh, two, two of the big things that are up this year, again, it's still transfer taxes, are up one hundred and twenty-nine thousand compared to last year. And EIT revenue is up one hundred and forty-six, which is twelve percent higher than last year. Uh, last week, I did have a tax collection committee meeting for Bucks County, and the actual, all of Bucks County is up that same twelve percent. The one warning we did get is they're starting to do delinquent collections, and that's why it's up so high. Um, earned income tax is about a two-and-a-half year waiting period from when state taxes are filed. So, right now, they're just starting to get back on track of getting the information from the state so they could, uh, bill people for any delinquent taxes. Um, going off of what Bobby said, real estate taxes, uh, so far this year, we've collected twenty, or ninety-two point eight percent. Last year was ninety-two point six, so we are right on track with that. Um, in talking dollar numbers, of the total, almost eight point three million billed, there's only five hundred and ninety-seven thousand outstanding. So, she was talking numbers of parcels, that's dollar amounts, like, we're looking really good with the collections still.
Good.
Um, expense-wise, expenses are up, uh, two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Compared to budget, we're at twenty-one percent, though. This, these numbers are through the end of March. So, we are built, normally you would think we'd be a quarter of the year done, we'd be at twenty-five percent. So, with expenses being a more, uh, straight-line item compared to revenues where we get most of it at the beginning year, the fact that we are behind budget means we're looking pretty good, too. So, good news on that.
Good to hear. So, revenues are up, and expenses are down again, for the-
Expenses are up, but not as much as revenues are up.
Well, but, but they're not, they're, they're not at, at the twenty-five percent quarter mark.
Yeah, so, if we wanted to look at, at bottom line in the general fund, uh, we were up two hundred and forty-nine thousand at the end of March last year. This year, we're up three hundred and seventy-five thousand. So, if we're looking very bottom-line dollars, we are looking much better, about one hundred and twenty-six.
Sounds good.
Okay. And the only other thing I was gonna mention, since we're only three months in to start, before we start diving into the other funds, is just about the escrow funds. We still are billing monthly. Um, regularly, at the end of every month, I get those bills out, and the good news, in March, we were able to collect back sixty-eight thousand dollars from legal and engineering fees that were used against those escrows. So, we sent out the bills at the end of February, and that much came back in March. So, we're looking really good there.
Good job.
That's great. It's nice to have the escrows in order again, rather than having it come out of the general fund and-
Yes.
And putting us in, uh, financial difficulty.
Yep.
Excellent job, thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Uh, now, I went through it, I don't have any questions. Thanks, John. All right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, come on up.
So, I was here a couple of years ago when they did the five-year projection. Do we have a new five-year projection?
We're working on that, yes. Actually, it's going to be a five and a ten-year projection, because the, the plan that we put in place is, is not, it's not a, um, we're not thinking short-term, we're thinking long-term. So, yes, John's working on, John, John is a wizard at finance, and, um, he's working on that, and we'll, you know, when he's, when he's done and we've thoroughly reviewed it, then we'll probably absolutely present it to the Township.
All right, great, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, unfinished business, the RACP resolution, two thousand and twenty-two dash ten. Mr. Scott?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, the, uh, resolution before you is, uh, one that we need to file, uh, with, ultimately, it's gonna be filed with the Office of the Budget in order to help us qualify for the, uh, RACP funding. Uh, this is one of the items that we need to take care of. This one specifically addresses, uh, the cash that was used by Warminster Township for that part of the matching fund. Uh, and you'll see in, in the resolution, we had to identify where it came from. Uh, it's part of the, uh, I'll read it out loud. The general obligation notes, two thousand and twenty-one series, uh, from the Delaware Valley Financing Authority from a few years ago, in the amount of fourteen million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, was secured and restricted solely for financing the RACP project and additional proceeds to be used interim funding for the Warminster Community Park and Recreation Center RACP project number, so on and so forth, uh, of which we were, um, I know that number's in here somewhere.
ME three hundred, fourteen ninety-one.
There it is, I'm sorry, thank you. So, this is for the three, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, sixty-five dollars from that fourteen point nine million that we earmarked, the board earmarked, uh, for part of the, the local match to qualify for this funding that we're making our way towards. And the, uh, the, uh, the consultant that's working with the state and us, uh, told us that we need to have the specific items in here about the bank account, uh, and the, uh, uh, I don't know what to call it, bank account, there it is, it's right there. Bank account number. So, once we've got this approved, we get it filed, that's one thing that we can, another box we can check.
Yeah, these are spec, uh, special conditions that, when this will satisfy the first, the local match special condition. Okay.
Do you need a motion?
I do need a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Second. Any other questions from the board? Questions from the public? Okay, being none, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Thank you. It'll be nice to see that, uh, one point seven million come into our, uh, back into our, uh, possession soon as possible. Okay, where am I here?
New business.
Yeah, I lost my page here. Okay, new business. All right, we're gonna consider appointment of two new members to the Planning Commission, and if I may, um, I'd like to nominate, um, Wayne McCullough. Thank you.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any, um, any comments from the board? Comments from the public? Okay, is there another nomination?
I'd like to nominate Pat Boyle.
I'll second that.
Any questions, comments? Any from the public? All right, being none, we'll call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Congratulations, two new members of the Planning Commission. Um, that's, uh, I served on that commission, and it's, uh, it's an interesting place. Uh, Wayne has been there before, he's done an incredible job, and he'll definitely be an asset.
Yeah, I'm really pleased to see Wayne back on there. Many, many years of experience on that planning commission.
Yes, so we have-
Really level-hand, level-headed guy.
We have, um, uh, God, her name escapes me right now, but we have someone that was a member of the Planning Commission from Baltimore, has an amazing amount of experience and, and, um, and, you know, brain smarts, and Wayne will be an asset. So, we'll have two people on there where the rest of, the rest of the group can certainly learn and grow, and we can continue to have a great planning commission. Thank you. Okay, what's next? I believe, Karen, you're up. First, before you get there, I'd just like to say congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you, much appreciated. Um, thank you, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Mr. Scott asked me to make a quick presentation about what's coming up with the Memorial Day Parade and Warminster Day, so I'll just give you a quickie update. Um, this is the VFW post Memorial Day Ceremony and Parade that the Township assists them with. Um, it is, right now, the VFW's still working on finding a grand marshal and a ceremony announcer, but the guest speaker will be retired Colonel Rick Kiernan. Um, he is a Warminster resident. I don't know if you know Rick, but he's a, um, very-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Very, um, very well-qualified person. I mean, he has had incredible experience in his life, both in the Army and out of the Army, so I think he will do an excellent job as the guest keynote speaker. Um, the VFW will provide all the wreaths and flags. The Township has provided them with their funding for this year. Uh, the Board of Supervisors proclamation has been prepared, so you guys just would need to sign off on that. Uh, the Mindy Campbell from Warminster Presbyterian will be the pastor, who will be doing the benediction and invocation. Uh, WRDB will be doing the day of the event broadcast, as they always do. Warminster Amateur Radio Club will be providing security throughout the event. Uh, Divit Insurance covers this event, so we're all, we're all good with there. The Police Department has received the road closure permit, so we can move through. We are working with, um, Emergency Service Coordinator, Joe Veltin, just to figure out where all the barricades need, and that's with Public Works, so we should deal with that. Um, John has gone out of his way for musical entertainment this year. We've got the William Tenet Marching Band, um, a country band called Y'all or Nothing, the Red Hot Ramblers, a mariachi band, uh, the Vitalla Drums, the Karen Gorm Pipes, and the Trinidad Steel, Steel Drums. So, that's a lot more music than what he's had in the past, he's been able to really make that pop this year. Uh, other people that will be participating include the Boy and Girl Scouts, uh, the Coast Guard Auxiliary, the VFW veterans, the Shriners, Craven Hall, um, several car and motorcycle clubs, uh, Elsie the Camel. Um, and we're always looking for other people who want to participate in the parade, so you should reach out to John Gruber at the VFW if you wish to be in the parade. Uh, the police will handle the road closures and traffic closures. Uh, emergency services will coordinate the fire and ambulance services. Um, the Public Works and Parks and Facilities people are responsible for events set up and breakdown, so we should get that all done, wouldn't be a problem. We're still waiting, um, for word on whether we're gonna be filming the event this year, looking for somebody to do that. And, um, for all of you who are participants in the parade, there is food and beverage at the end, and pictures with Elsie the Camel at the VFW.
Very nice.
Those are all good. Um, and that, that event, I don't even think I told you what the date of the event was, but that day is Monday, the thirtieth. It is a, there is no rain date for that event, because we can never get all those people and volunteers back to do the event, so-
Yeah, I think a few years ago, we had a rain out, so we just had the ceremony the next week, we didn't have a parade.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but there is no parade rain date, so I'm hoping that we're gonna have really nice weather. Uh, Warminster Day, Warminster Day will take place on Saturday, June eleventh, from eleven to four. Again, there is no, no rain date for that one as well. Uh, we continue to seek sponsorship and volunteers, uh, and vendors. Right now, uh, we've increased the number of vendors to thirty-six. I think in your report that I think in your report that I gave you prior, we only had like sixteen, but in just the last week, it's kind of exploded. We only have about fifteen to twenty spaces left, so if you want to be a vendor at Warmminster Day, please reach out to us as quickly as possible. We'd really like to thank Cowie Family Shop, Right of Warmminster. They are our main event sponsor, and they, they always do a great job. Gilmore and Associates, thank you very much for coming out. This year, we, Pico Exelon also came through with a sponsorship. Our silver sponsors, I'm going to give everybody a plug because it's important. Our silver sponsors include Q and B Bank, Carol Engineering, Flagren Associates, thanks to that, the station at Bucks, J.G. Petrucci, DaVinci Eye Care, County Builders, Automotive Training Center. Our bronze sponsors include a baby's breath, Inspire Federal Credit Union, Dunlap, S.L.K. CPA, Havas Incorporated, T.E. Construction and C.O. Brothers. Small businesses include Bucks County Immunization, Nova Care Rehabilitation, Citizens for a Better Warmminster, Keebles Auto Service, CP Commercial Printing, and Mallard Plumbing. Fans of the park include Warmminster Rotary. So we'll always, we'll still be taking those, but if you want to be a big sponsor and be on the T-shirt, "I need your money ASAP," because we need to order the T-shirts. Event, event activities. So upcoming up, we're going to have a lot of music. Cherry Lane Band is coming back. Steve Polara, Cool Beans Music, will be there for the kids. We'll have our Rhythm Village Drumming Circle that was so popular last year. Inflatables, ARC Animal Education will be coming out, Society of Young Magicians, Storytime to the Library. Hopefully, canine demonstrations will be back. Garrison Kiritah, who is the Star War characters that everybody loves, they're coming back again this year. Doylestown Rock Gym will be providing the climbing wall. We'll have family games that are being donated through Northampton Township, the vendor marketplace, of course. WRDB is going to do an on-air, on-spot, couple of hours for us, you know, in the, in the, in the moment, so that should be good. We'll be having our T-shirt sales and backpack giveaways. The vendor marketplace, as I said, we have only, we have thirty-six vendors right now looking for more food trucks. This year's food trucks will include street-side barbecue, cow corn, Chick-fil-A, Kona Pizza, Fannella's Funnel Cake, and Kona Ice. Right now, everything is pretty much on order. Our tents, our tables, our chairs, our generators, our porta-potties, our hand sanitizers, our dumpsters, our message boards, and all the inflatable. So everything's pretty much on order. We just have to confirm and get them all wrapped up. Budget right now, we are currently on track. We have made enough money to support the event so that the event can be offered for free to the public, which is what always.
That's wonderful. Good to hear.
As Mark said, volunteers are always needed. We desperately need volunteers to come out and make this event a success, so anybody, family members, anybody who wants to come out and play with us that day. We're not looking for a huge commitment, just two to four hours if you have it. We have set up, break down, and then all during the day.
Supervisors?
Supervisors.
Darlene's usually on that supervisor.
I think she reminded you of that already. Yeah. If you want to get involved, Warmminster Day, www.warmisturdays.org is the website.
Thank you. I have one request.
Sure.
This year, I know the last couple of times, we put the wreath in front of the, it was our official. Can we get a real one, please?
Yeah.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
We're at top of it.
That's nice. I have a question. I didn't hear the name of the special speaker for Warmminster Day.
Rick Kiernan, retired Colonel, Army Colonel Rick Kiernan.
Was he the same one that was there last year?
No. He's a different person. Different person.
Yeah. For Warmminster.
No, you mean Memorial Day.
Memorial Day. Memorial Day, Rick Kiernan.
Wasn't the same one as last year.
No, it is not.
He was very political.
That's my very, it's my understanding. No.
Thank you.
Yeah. Rick, Rick's got incredible experience. Wait till you read his bio. It's, it's amazing.
Okay.
Okay? Any further questions?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Karen. This might actually be for John Ramey, but if you know, that you gave us a very long list of very generous donations. Is PFM Financial amongst them?
We have not received anything from them yet.
Thank you very much.
John, maybe we should talk to them?
I'll send the email.
They could cut their PowerPoints down to twenty pages and donate the rest.
Donate to Warmminster Day.
That's right.
For, for. Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Sounds like great fun.
Yeah. Sounds like we've got a lot of things going on there.
Is there a rain date on that, Karen, on Warmminster Day?
No.
No.
It's not going to rain that day.
No.
Okay.
We had beautiful weather the last couple of years, and hopefully, we have beautiful weather Memorial Day, which is always a hit or miss, but for Warmminster Day. All right. That's it. Professional reports. I will start with the manager, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, to follow up on the item that was discussed earlier, the RACP resolution, we do have a list of items that we are required to provide to the State Office of the Budget through the consultant that is involved in the project, Stantec Engineering. In addition to building the park and making the improvements, excuse me, I should say building the fields and the courts and making the improvements, pavilion and whatnot, we're required to provide a substantial amount of documentation that they identify to us that is needed throughout the project. So the resolution is one of those things, and we do have a few that are still outstanding, but working with Lisa and work, who's been working with both the Parks Department and with Gilmore on, on these items, and with some great advice from Jeff Darwak at the, the Redevelopment Authority, we've been able to take this list, which as you'll see in your handout, goes on for three pages, and, and knock a few items out. If you look at the list, just as an example, they're broken down in special conditions. This is all Harrisburg speak. Special condition, construction compliance, grant compliance, and special conditions. So the resolution we passed tonight takes care of two of those. So it's two for one. And just to go over some of the ones that we're still dealing with, working with Aaron Lisa from Gilmore's office, Aaron has identified the requirements that need to be filed for the actual bids that were done, that Nico ended up getting. The where the bids were published, what they said, what the bidders turned in, how they were advertised in the paper and on PennBid. So that's being taken care of. We've got a, a cash flow item that isn't really cash flow oriented. It's a kind of a misnomer. Stumped the great John Ramey. But again, with Lisa working with our friend and partner, Jeff Darwak at the RDA, we were able to identify what that needs to look like, and we are awaiting that feedback. And we are looking for a very elusive, item number nine there, Phase One Environmental Study, Environmental Assessment. What's the S stand for? An ESA?
Oh, study.
Environmental Study Assessment Study. Thank you.
It's actually, well.
It's a, now, we have, we have Phase Three, Phase Four study, and we have boxes and boxes of studies.
It's been studied to death.
To death, over the last twenty-five years, but we can't locate this Phase One ESA. So?
Environmental Site Assessment. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Environmental Site Assessment Study. And Phase One is the most rudimentary.
Rudimentary. Thank you.
So we're working with our partners, hello, Craig. Gilmore, to develop a substitute one.
Finished their own sentences.
Yes, that was a little worse. So we're making progress, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, because if we don't get these things done, we will not see any part of that one-point-seven-six-five million that we qualified for several years ago. So in addition to doing the construction and having it, the punch list knocked out by Gilmore, and all the things that have been done out there, and as beautiful as it looks, there's still, there's a backend, a bureaucratic backend that we are trying to get done as quickly as possible, because we do believe it will take the state several months to analyze the many things we are giving them, because they're doing this for communities all across the state, because the goal is to get that money to, we want that money by the end of the year.
Correct.
By the end of twenty-twenty-two, because we put five million dollars into it, and we were eligible for this one-point-seven-six-five million. So that's the, that's the back office function of it all. And I, I just wanted to give you all an update on that, because there are, as, as we finish up the physical work on the park, there's still this other stuff going on.
Right.
And everybody, we got the full team working on it.
Good.
Except me. I'd just say, is it done yet? Nobody left. All right.
Well, yeah. I mean, these, these RACP grants need to be administratively managed actively, actively managed.
They are a bear.
And they are, they are. They're very, they're, there's a lot of administrative compliance, and, you know, I see a lot of it's been taken care of already, which is great. Now, I'm looking at this one section here, Craig. Question for you. So Stantec is informing us that a letter is in lieu of the Phase One? Page, yeah. That's, that's correct. They were okay with that?
Stantec is saying, here comes Lisa, part of the clock.
All right. Because, I mean, I know Stantec is representing the Office of Budget.
Correct. So what I was told by the consultant from Stantec was that, since we cannot find, locate the Phase One study, that if our engineer puts something on letterhead saying, and I don't have the language with me, I'm sorry, but I provided the language to Aaron, that would be on their letterhead.
Right.
The issue may be that the Office of Budget won't accept it.
Yes. That's my concern.
Yeah. So this is the workaround, but it doesn't mean they're going to accept it.
Right. Unfortunately, in a appraisal report dated December seventh, twenty-twelve, it mentioned that a Phase One Environmental Site Assessment needed to be completed. We don't know if that was ever done. We have no record of that. So.
And many of the administrative employee predecessors have been involved in this project.
Right.
The people that are no longer here have come and gone, and we've tried to contact several of them, and they all give us the same advice. Check the file. We have.
Wherever that file may be.
Yes. And we, and Gary Smith and Andrew McAdams located several boxes, two big boxes. We went through them, and while there are Phase Three Environmental Assessment Reports.
Remedial investigation, yes.
There are no Phase Ones.
Right.
But we're still looking.
And I've confirmed with Stantec that they will not accept the NALA study.
They won't accept any of the remedial investigation, remedial actions, and anything like that, huh?
No.
Yeah. That's unfortunate. If a letter doesn't suffice, we're going to have to pay for an environmental site assessment, I would assume.
Yes.
Okay.
I can find out. I don't know if after the fact it would suffice.
If, if the engineering letter?
No, I mean, paying for a study after the fact.
Well, I would hope that a simple five-thousand-dollar report would not hold up one-point-six-seven million or whatever it is. That would be very unfortunate for, for whoever dropped that ball.
Well, we want to make sure that before we submit it, before Stantec turns it over to the state, before we, Stantec will tell us, everything looks good. Now, we're going to turn it over, now, turn it over to the state through their portal. And whether or not it's one strike and you're out, or you got a foul tip in there, we also need to run that down.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure that we'll have an opportunity. I mean, if you're administrative, I, based on all the administrative stuff that I do, you have a couple of shots at it. So whatever you're out of compliance with, you, you just have to bring it into compliance in so many days, usually is what happens.
I'd like to button this up as soon as possible. I'm working on it daily.
Oh, I know. Everyone's working on it, so, but this, this is concerning, because it was supposed to be done in twenty-twelve, and now it's twenty-twenty-two. That's ten years ago. So we're going to have to do our best here. Everybody's going to have to put their thinking caps on, and Stantec is saying that they think the letter might work, but it's up to the Office of Budget, correct?
Correct.
Do you think they could, because they actually are their consultant, do you think they could find out for us?
Sure.
Thank you. I mean, that makes me very nervous.
Me too.
It's a lot of money sitting on a simple report. Okay. Thanks.
I have a question, Tom.
Yes, ma'am.
On the, on special conditions number eight, about highway opening permits, and then again, on number, on page two, number three, it says unsatisfied, and then on number eight down here, on the third page, it says that highway opening permit with all supplements submitted is satisfied. Does it?
Right. We, this is, this, one sentence from a previous CMR report.
Okay.
And one is from the most current one.
The last page is the one that you wrote.
Right.
Okay. The first, the first two pages are from Construction Monitoring Report Two, and the second two pages are from Construction Monitoring Report Three.
Okay.
So I was just giving an update of what's been satisfied in that month.
We got it. Okay. Thank you.
That was one of the things that Gil.
Had a little trouble understanding it. Okay.
That was one of the things that was on the actual punch list that Craig's office helped us with.
I thought this last page looks much better than the first two.
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're moving forward with it. Looks like we're making a lot of progress, which is good. Okay. Thank you, Tom. Anything else?
Now for number one.
Okay.
I'll be quick. Werner Monroe Park lighting updates. So a couple of months ago, the board approved a project to put in some LED lights to replace the high sodium, high sodium, excuse me. What was the proper name?
I think it's high, high-pressure sodium.
High sodium. I'm a doctor.
Too much salt you're going to.
Yeah. You're going to need some.
Well, we, we ran into a few hiccups. We, we were looking for some information from the contractor. They were giving us some, and we were, we were kind of going back and forth, and then they said, look, we're, we're worried about the lead time. We're worried about the, the time it's going to take, the fabrication, the fabrication time, the, the issue, the supply chain issue that everybody's been hearing about for months and months and months. So as that was happening, we heard from a gentleman from the Pioneers, who uses Werner for their football and cheerleading association, and he said he has concerns about the electric service out there. So we've been, we put together an ad hoc committee consisting of myself and Mr. Hayes and, and this nice gentleman. We went over there, so you take a look at it.
It's a nice gentleman, say, electric.
Electric, yeah. Yes, from Hinkles and McCoy. And so he knows what he's doing. Electric, yeah, from me, yes, from Hinkelman McCoy, and so he knows what he's doing. So, we want to make this a broader project, not just putting in the LEDs. We want to look at the electric service. Where are the lights in the right spot? Gilmore worked up a foot candle plan for us. We're thinking maybe some lights could be in different locations to help better illuminate the main field and make improvements to the electric service now that is there. The box seems to be from the New Deal.
Right. The switchgear is now, it's, it's pretty antiquated, and it's probably dangerous, so it needs to be upgraded.
So, we, and with the funding we have available, the extra funding we have available through ARPA, we want to take a broader look at this issue and not just the LEDs, because the corollary to that is their LED lights failing have failed at Monroe. So, we want to look at those two, is there a problem with surges, electric, is what's happening with these LED fixtures? So, we're gonna look at both parks and come up with a plan, put the plans out to bid, and get the work done, hopefully before the fall, for the season to start, or August, I guess, is when they start.
Tom, may I ask, so this is gonna be a lighting project that's gonna be done and good for many, many years to come, correct? No Band-Aids this time, correct?
Hopefully, it'll be a generational investment.
Thank you.
So, we hope it lasts as long as the switchgear that's in there now, which is probably 50 or 70 years, maybe. Yeah, as old as the park.
I think it had a Philadelphia Athletics sticker on it.
Yeah. Now, we, we took a look at the plan, and we had some questions or certain, there was one side of the field that wasn't well lit, and we decided to, if we're gonna spend the money, let's do it right, let's make it last 25 years or longer, and that'll include switchgear. And then we'll also notice the plumbing there. The plumbing gets shut down, and when it's cold, and if that service comes inside the building, anywhere the switchgear is, which is heated, maybe those bathrooms can stay open, because there is heaters in those bathrooms. Because that, obviously, football's in the colder weather, so those bathrooms shouldn't have to be shut down during the season. They should be utilized. And so, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna make some great improvements over there. And again, my theory was, if we're gonna spend the money, let's do it right.
That's very well, it's really needed.
Again, we'll be using the ARPA funds.
Yes, it'll be ARPA funds, that's right.
Public certification, that was the...
Yeah, that's the, the infrastructure money that we receive. So, we're gonna spend a little bit of that money over in Warner Park and, and bring that, make that a, make that a go-to field for...
And unlike the RACP funding, this is, has very few requirements.
A vote from the board, I believe, right?
Yeah, so, also, there's a length of, half the, half the facility, well, the back portion of the facility where the practice fields are, and there's a little playground equipment area, that has above, above-grade service. It's strong. And the length of the cable had come down, and now it's spooled up on one of the poles. But when the lights are on, that is live.
It's energized.
So, that's something we want to take care of, too. So, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And we'll have updates. We're meeting with, I'm meeting with Craig's staff next week to go over it, the plan they did for us, for the lighting, so we'll have an understanding of where the, where the lighting can be placed to have it optimal, optimal places for the lighting.
Thank you.
And taking a look at replacing the golf balls as well, because they also look like they may be from a previous EPUC.
Yeah. Karen, I have another question. Is there, are the lights on in Monroe right now?
Are the lights on in Monroe?
Right now?
The soccer fields aren't in use right now.
What about the baseball fields?
We don't have any.
There's no lit baseball fields there?
At one.
Oh, no, I mean at Monroe.
No.
Really?
Can we add that to our list?
So, it's just the soccer fields that are, that are lit?
Yes.
Much for your true.
Can we...
Yeah, that's right.
Can we add that to our list of things to get done with that?
With the ARPA money?
Yeah.
Well, we can have a look, yeah.
That'd be, that would be...
That would be nice to have a, you know, if you light that baseball field up, I mean, it's a nice field.
That was beautiful. And the other advantage was, because right now, there's a ball field that's actually, takes up some of the football field.
Yeah.
So, that would almost be nice, if you could put that all together, so they don't be at the same venue.
You mean that softball field?
Because then you can make that another practice field for football, because that's a growing program.
Well, that would certainly eliminate some of the lighting in the back there, wouldn't be necessary. Well, we can have a look at that.
I agree with Janice, as a, as a former coach, I think that's great, whatever we can do.
Well, I played a lot under the lights in baseball, so it's, it's a different world. It's a half a baseball, you see, right?
Kids love playing under the lights.
That ball changes sizes in the dark so much. Yeah, because you only see half of it.
Yeah. You only see the bottom half.
Ah, the memories. Carpenter Complex. Okay, you have something else for us, Tom? Ben Wilson Center, correct?
Little number three, I'll make this quick, thank you. Working with a, Philip Stoneman Architectural and Power Group, John Shade, professional engineer from Power Group, we are expecting on Monday documents that will be used, that they can use to put the bids together for the HVAC and generator work at the Ben Wilson Center.
Excellent.
Yay!
So, we are taking that next step, and then we will put the, have those available, of course, for a bid, take a look at it.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And once that gets done, we can drop it on Penn Bid, and then let the world know, and all the interested contractors, that we've got something, a great project that everybody's been waiting for, for many years, and also part of the American Rescue Plan Act funding.
Yay!
That concludes my...
So, we're getting a lot of needed upgrades done with the infrastructure money. That's, that's great news.
Yes.
And we are gonna have an update on the security cameras at the next meeting.
Okay.
Oh, okay, looking forward to that.
We're gonna put them everywhere.
Okay.
Everywhere.
Great, great. We need that. Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you. All right, who's next? Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, good evening. Good evening to the public. Outside of what we discussed in executive session, I have nothing else to report.
Okay, thank you very much. Hopefully Randy's enjoying himself.
He is, yes. He's having a good time.
Good. All right, and again, last but not least, Mr. Kennard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, Mr. Scott, whenever my engineers report, I think he mentioned Gilmore six times, but he did leave out the road program.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, he's done other things. The rest of my staff, but I'll take care of the road program.
All right.
Andrew's doing a great job, Andrew and Aaron handled that as well. But an update, I got an update today, they're running two paving crews, two milling crews, two paving crews. The handicap ramps actually got a head start in mid-April. I'm sure that you guys saw our bills, we had a lot of ADA ramp design in March and April. That includes survey, design, and stakeout, and construction admin, so it was pretty hefty on the, which you guys all knew that the concrete contract is pretty expensive compared to the road program. But I haven't had any negative reports, hopefully Mr. Scott hasn't either. If he did, I think we would have talked by now. The paving is, is starting this week as well, and they had a little rain out, I guess, last week, and got, you know, a few days behind, but so far, so good.
And we're coordinating with the municipal authority?
Yeah, I think, obviously, communications, you know, gets better every year.
Yes, I hear that, too, from both sides, yeah, it's getting much, much better.
Tom and I try to stay out of as much as we can, and, you know, things get done, so...
That's good.
Land development, a couple land development updates since my report. Warminster Center, Norristown and Street Road, I did mention before, I think, that they got the message finally about the density, about the layout. I've been working with their engineer, they did submit a revised sketch plan, so they took a step back from preliminary plans, addressed my comments and concerns and the staff's, and we're currently reviewing that plan, and they would like to come in and present that at the June, I think we're going down to June, we were trying to get them on this meeting, they actually pulled off.
Yeah.
After all the pushing, we were really trying to help them out a little bit there with zoning review, so they will hopefully be presenting at your June meeting. And you will have our zoning officer's letter and my letter, look at zoning only, the big picture, try to get some feedback again on any variances they need, any relief, and the overall layout. A new plan that we just got in is Franklin Corp. Center Lot Three. It's the last large lot. I believe they came in a couple of years ago, and I'm not sure everybody was on the board at this time, but they looked at residential, then they went, then that was kicked back, and they're coming with a buy right, 65,000 square foot, two-story, light manufacturing use. This will be along Johnsville Boulevard, so we just started that review. I anticipate that being probably June or July, when you see, finally get to the board. And then Seafood America, they are, I think they postponed or tabled their hearing, going to, they had a couple of variances they needed. They added a couple additional variances, and the staff's working with them on those issues, hopefully get them resolved, and then they'll get the relief. We are concurrently doing a preliminary plan review, so you will see that'll happen pretty quickly here, probably in July, June, July.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Craig, and thank you Gilmore and Flagron Associates for supporting Warminster Day, we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And whoever is doing all those potholes, they're doing a really good job, and I'm getting nice feedback from some of the residents, different...
Wouldn't that be Public Works?
Yeah, that's not my hat.
I'm just saying, shout out to you guys, they're doing a great job.
Shout out to Public Works.
Yes.
Great job.
I don't want Andrew calling me first thing in the morning if I did that for that.
Well, also, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm declaring winter to be over. If it's in my power to do it, nobody laugh, that's okay. And I do think that the Public Works Department, and you guys know this better than I do, they did a great job this past winter.
Yes.
They did. They did a wonderful job.
Yay!
We're kind of lucky that most of the events, the salting events, the treating events, were confined to the weekend, and most of those are overnight, so we didn't have to worry about school buses and, you know, people having their commutes impacted. But as opposed to the experience that may have been, as opposed to what happened in the experience in the past, using a contractor, you know, these, our guys did a great job. And now they're pivoting towards grass cutting.
I understand they're doing a fantastic job as well.
Well, certainly Warner Park last night looked fantastic.
Yes, it did.
And...
It did.
So, I thank, a big thank you to them, and I'm meeting with them shortly about contract negotiations, and I'll make that, I'll let them know personally that they did a great job.
Please do.
And as far as a meeting, if we need a meeting on May the 19th, I don't believe we do, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
If there's no objections, we'll cancel the meeting.
No objection.
No objection.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So, then our next meeting is when?
June 1st.
June 5th or June something like that?
Second or third.
June 2nd.
2nd.
Okay. Second round of public comment. Anyone? All right.
I'd like to make a comment. I just want to make a shout out to our new company, Nifty Fifties, because they're just new in town, and they've already volunteered to contribute to certain parks events, and they've asked what they can do for the library, and I think that's really amazing, just new in town, so thanks.
Great.
We're happy to have you.
You might as well continue with your supervisor's comments, because that was...
Happy Mother's Day.
All right, we'll do this in reverse now. Janice?
Happy Cinco de Mayo today to everybody. Wise when you go out to celebrate the day. I also wanted to mention, since Memorial Day is coming up, we do have the hometown hero banners over at the community park, so if you want to get on the website or talk to the ladies over at the Parks in RAC, if you want to honor your grandfather, or your husband, or former service member, that's an excellent opportunity to honor them for Memorial Day.
Okay, Kathy?
Yes, I would also like to say Happy Cinco de Mayo, and again, don't drink and drive. Also, are we going, when are we going on the summer schedule, Mr. Chair?
I was gonna bring that up when it was my turn.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, thank you. And also, Happy Mother's Day. Make sure you all give your mom a big hug and kiss, because we are, we are the forefront of our families, you know, we keep, we're the glue that keeps the families together, so make sure you give them a big shout out, do whatever you can to make mom happy on Mother's Day. And that's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we'll discuss casual attire for the summer, I'll leave that one for you.
Okay.
And I want to wish Happy Mother's Day to my wife Erica, and my mother-in-law Pat, and all the other mothers out there. And again, Karen, wish you all the best. I gave you some good advice at the park board last night for retirement, that you, you don't get up until your husband leaves the house in the morning, and nap time is at 2:00[1681.12]